This session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Would please honor our nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call, please.
Counselor Laurie? Counselor Martin?
Here.
Counselor Madonza?
Here.
Counselor Mercier?
Here.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Noon?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Kennedy?
Here.
Counselor Leahy?
Here.
That's nine present.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Martin and then Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chambers for Ian Cullen. Ms. Cullen died last month at the age of 82. She was a lifelong resident of the city, attended Lowell schools, and was a graduate of the Lowell High School class of 1949. Went eventually to then Lowell State Teachers College and got a master's from Fitchburg State and went on to be a schoolteacher here in Lowell and taught at the Maury School for over 40 years. She was a communicant of St. Patrick's Church and survived by many good friends, among them Margaret Lindsey of Lowell, Patricia and William O'Brien, also of Lowell. She was a dedicated educator to many, many students for generations and will be truly missed.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber for a man that I affectionately called Smiling Sonny Joe "Father Grillo" Camara, better known as Joseph Camara, beloved husband of Eleanor Camara, with whom he shared 57 years of marriage. He received his education in Lowell and graduated from Lowell Trade School. Joe had his own business as a cabinetmaker. Although he was not a veteran himself, he had a strong respect and dedication to the Portuguese-American veterans. Joe was a fixture in the back Central Neighborhood and the Neighborhood Association, having led several green parks in the area to include the one closest to his heart, Grillo Park, at the corner of Central and Chapel Streets, as well as Lemur Park on Mill Street. Joe was also the lead on having an island dedicated to his uncle Edward Santos for his service to his community as well as the Portuguese community as a whole. Joe was also the official flag tender for the back Central area. Having lived in back Central Neighborhood all of his life, he was a great inspiration for the residents in that area of the city. Besides his lovely wife Eleanor, he is survived by his two daughters, Joanne Silva, Roseanne Reese, and his son Joseph Camara, as well as his eight grandchildren and one great-granddaughter. We offer our sympathy to his family, relatives, and many friends. He was a remarkable man and he will be truly missed. And I'd like to offer a moment of silence to all the people that have passed on since the last city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd all please rise in a moment of silence in darkened chambers. Under mayor's business, we have a proclamation for the Lowell Food Security Coalition naming October 24th, 2013 as Food Day in the city of Lowell. I'd like to offer on behalf of my colleagues on the city council a proclamation. Whereas promoting healthier, safer diets is a critical factor in improving people's overall health, a primary concern of the city of Lowell. And whereas supporting sustainable family farms and local agriculture benefits the local community, economy, securing fair pay and safe conditions for food and farm workers, beneficial for both the producer and consumer. And whereas expanding access to food and reducing hunger is of critical importance to aid those who live in food deserts and reforming factory farms to protect the environment and farm animals is necessary to sustain future generations. Now therefore, I, Patrick O'Murphy, Mayor of the city of Lowell, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2013 as Food Day in the city of Lowell, Massachusetts, and encourage all residents to join in this celebration given this 15th day of October 2013.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Heather Hilbert and I work for Lowell General Hospital. I'm also a member of the Lowell Food Security Coalition. Tonight, I would like to share with you some information about Food Day. Food Day is a year-round nationwide celebration of and movement toward more healthy, affordable, and sustainable food culminating in a day of action on October 24th every year. Food Day aims to bring us closer to a food system with real food that is produced with care for the environment, animals, and the women and men who grow, harvest, and serve Food Day is a chance to celebrate what our food system does right and to take action to address pressing food issues we face. This year, the Lowell Food Security Coalition decided to celebrate more than just Food Day, but rather the entire week. Our group had so many inspiring ideas, we realized that just one day of celebrating would not be enough. Before I continue, though, I would like to share with you a little background information about the Food Security Coalition. The mission of the Lowell Food Security Coalition is to increase the community's engagement in and the capacity of our local food system and ensure that all constituents have equal access to grow, purchase, and consume healthy and culturally appropriate food in quantities that can sustain a healthy community. In 2011, the Lowell Food Security Coalition elected to conduct a community food assessment to enhance a collective understanding of the resources and gaps present within Lowell's food system. With no surprise, the results from the Lowell Community Foods Assessment are equal to, if not greater than, the national or state averages. Food insecurity, safety, and hunger are all epidemic issues nationwide. Millions of Americans don't know where or when they might get food for their families. In Lowell, a number of households struggle to find affordable, nutritious foods for their families. According to the Community Food Assessment, more than half of all respondents are dissatisfied with their current diets, or worse, they are hungry. Poor diets are often the result of families having to figure out how to make ends meet. A poor diet is a proven cause of widespread obesity, diabetes, and other diet-related diseases that cost us all more in the long run. Poverty rates in Lowell are estimated at 17.6 percent, whereas poverty statewide is estimated at 10.7 percent and nationally at 14.3. Last but not least, many food and farm workers still labor in unfair, unsafe conditions, and animal welfare is often ignored. Currently, local and regional farmers lack adequate outlets to distribute their products within Lowell, undermining both farmers' potential market share and residents' ability to access locally-produced foods. The good news, though, by collaborating locally on Food Day or Week, we can build the momentum needed to keep improving the American food system. Lowell has the energy, potential, and local expertise to be a leading city in this movement. To see the schedule of our local events beginning a week from this evening, you can go to www.foodday.org. In closing, I would like to thank you all for your time and commitment. Thank you to the city council for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Food Day in Lowell, the Department of Agriculture for their guidance and inspiration, and most importantly, I would like to thank all of the local organizations for helping to plan and organize the week's events. Without you, none of this would have been possible. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation declaring the week of October 14th through the 20th, 2013 Acre Family Daycare Week in recognition of the Acre Family Childcare 25th Anniversary. And I'd like to offer a proclamation on behalf of the city council. Whereas 25 years ago, Anita Mola, then a student at UMass Lowell, saw a need and realized a vision that has since transformed the economic and domestic lives of countless Lowell families. And whereas Acre Family Childcare has not only made it possible for low-income women to join the workforce by providing safe, affordable childcare in home settings, but has also empowered women to become successful small-business owners, providing community-based childcare. And whereas today, the organization oversees 54 family-childcare providers, caring for nearly 400 children from every ethnic background Lowell has to offer every day, as well as offering parent education, family support services, and early childhood education programs in multiple languages, and strengthening our community. Now therefore, I, Patrick O'Murphy, Mayor of the city of Lowell, and a few others among us, offer and proclaim October 14th, 9th through the 19th, 2013 as Acre Family Childcare Week in the city of Lowell, Massachusetts, and encourage all residents to join in this celebration given this 15th day of October. (APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mayor Murphy. Greetings, city council members. Thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity to come talk to you all very briefly, just about something that I'm really excited about, and that is Acre Family Childcare. As Mayor Murphy mentioned in the proclamation, we are celebrating our 25th anniversary this year, and we're extremely excited. And in true Acre fashion, we didn't come to an event without a gift. So if any of you would love one of these lovely Acre yellow t-shirts, we have plenty to go around so you can share your spirit as well. I'll just pass. We don't exactly have enough for everybody, but, again, as in the proclamation, thank you. You're all invited to join us in our celebration this week. On Saturday at 7:00 PM, we'll be having our official big party along with our providers and our parents and community supporters. We will be at the UMass Lowell Inn and Conference Center. So if your shirt does not fit, please feel free to come by and swap it out for one that does, or if you love more of our Acre yellow, we've got plenty more of that. We just would like to thank the council again for the opportunities to share in our excitement. And I'd just like to ask all of the ladies and babies and dads and men, gentlemen behind me with the yellow, to please stand up so that you can see. Thank you all so much.[795.01][795.01](APPLAUSE). Acre Family Childcare's mission is to make a high-quality early education experience available to all children throughout the city of Lowell, regardless of the income of their parents. Our mission is also to provide small-business support and training so that women who are here wearing these beautiful green shirts can open, start, and keep open successful small businesses within their homes. Some of our providers who are celebrating us, who we are celebrating with this year have been with Acre for over 20 years, and several of them, as you can see by our display downstairs, are relatively new. So on behalf of the staff and all of the kids who've since graduated in these past 25 years, I would like to say thank you to everyone from Acre Family Childcare for all of the work that you do in the city. And if you'd like to learn more about us, if you'd like to join us, please do. Take a moment, if you have some time, either this evening or during this week, to check out some of our photos downstairs that tell a little bit more about our story. And I know you all have plenty of work to do, and I'm sure the kids are getting a little bit restless. So thank you again, and please come celebrate with us, and have a great evening, everybody.
Lastly, we have a communication from the members of the Hunger and Homeless Commission to address the council to promote their upcoming spaghetti supper, as well as discuss their work moving forward. And we do have a proclamation to offer on behalf of the city council. Whereas more than 16,600 people are homeless in the state of Massachusetts, with thousands more going to bed hungry every night, they are there, your neighbors, your kids, classmates, the people you stand in line next to at the coffee shop. The average age of a homeless person in Massachusetts is eight years old. Whereas the root causes of hunger and homelessness are complex and take long-term, wide-ranging solutions that include education, job training, substance and mental health treatment to boost people and their families to self-sustainability. And whereas the city of Lowell's Hunger and Homeless Commission works year-round in conjunction with the city's social service providers to promote, sustain, and develop services and responses to combat hunger and homelessness in our community, making a difference in the lives of individuals and families, and making the city a better place to live. Now therefore, I, Patrick O'Murphy, Mayor of the city of Lowell, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim October as Hunger Homeless Awareness Month in the city of Lowell given this 15th day of October 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.[974.51][974.51](APPLAUSE). My name's Troy Betancourt, and I'm the acting chair for the City of Lowell's Commission for Hunger and Homeless. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. I do have a couple of handouts. Sorry they didn't make the packet. Can I just hand them out? Thank you. The city of Lowell's Hunger and Homeless Commission would like to ask that the city review our charter in a future meeting possibly. And in the process of reviewing the charter, address the membership obligations of the charter which indicate that a member of city council or designee would be on the commission as well as from the mayor's office, as well as the school committee in a future meeting. So that's something we wanted to put out there. We also wanted to thank you for declaring October Hunger Homeless Awareness Month, not just for October, but for the entire year, especially in the upcoming winter months that are coming. We know that we always struggle with putting together winter protocol and the folks that are living under the bridges and in the camps, and just to keep them in your thoughts and your prayers, especially in the holiday seasons coming up. So thank you. And in closing, I wanted to remind you all of our annual spaghetti dinner, which is taking place on Wednesday, October 23rd, at the Polish-American Veterans Club. Marcy would kill me if I didn't say this, so I have to. It's $5 per person, it's $12 per family. We do try to raise money to support winter protocol. It's just something that the commission's done longstanding. Recently, over the last six to eight months, the commission has really revamped and reorganized our membership. We've brought in to include organizations that are outside of Lowell's continuum of care, which would be Lowell General Hospital, South Bay Mental Health Services, as well as Mill City Grows, the Institute for Health and Recovery. And we want to offer the city our collective expertise in working with this population, in offering solutions and maybe opportunities to work together so that we can provide the services to those citizens as well. So thank you.
Next, we have, under the city clerk's portion of the agenda, minutes of the city council meeting of October 8th, Public Safety Subcommittee of October 8th for acceptance.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Counselor Laurie, seconded by Counselor Leahy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. We have a communication from the city clerk, Dangerous Dog Report from Animal Control. Is there any discussion? Move to accept. Counselor Leahy?
I had a question on that. What actually happens with that report? This is the first one I've seen that come across the desk for me, so what do we normally do with that?
Mr. Clerk?
Forwarded to a hearing would be hell. It's just a report that, historically, they've been sent, when a dangerous dog report is done, they've been sent to the council in the package, and just keeping up with that historical element of it.
Has any action been happened? I mean, when you read the report, I mean, the dog just jumps out of, you know, the dog is dangerous, so is the dog put down? Is the dog gonna be put down, or does it?
Procedurally, it's, there's a hearing that comes about, and the decision is made at that point of what to be done.
All right. I mean, does anybody have a better, not, you know, no disrespect, I'm just saying, if this comes across our desk, we should know what the end result is. Is there anything that happens to this, Mr. Manager?
Well, there's several things that could happen. The hearing could result in the dog being removed from the city. Dog could also be euthanized. That's certainly within the realm of possibility. I don't happen to have that report right in front of me, but we can find out about that and return that information to the council.
All right. Because, I mean, at least, you know, it sounds like the dog should be removed from the city. When you read the report, nothing instigated this, but the dog got loose. And if the dog gets loose and is gonna act like that, it shouldn't even be in the city, so.
Right. It was deemed a, there was a public hearing back in April, which it was deemed a dangerous dog, but there was another one, another bite incident that took place on October 9th. At this point in time, I believe the dog is, has been quarantined, but that is leading to another, will lead to another, in all likelihood, another hearing.
All right. If we could just have a follow-up?
Absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Entertained a motion to accept placed on file, so moved by Counselor Madonza, seconded by Counselor Noon. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Under the city auditor's portion of the agenda, we have a communication for the first quarter 2014 cash controls review. Any discussion? Counselor Madonza.
I know this came from over a year ago when we needed to have oversight over the cash controls for other departments, so it's good to see that it's still ongoing and that no discrepancies were found. And I'll move to accept the communication placed on file.
Motion by Counselor Madonza, seconded by Counselor Laurie. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. An unfinished business require a motion to remove the items from the table. So moved by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Madonza. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. If Counselor Madonza would take the chair, please.
First, we have a motion by Mayor Murphy. Request city manager explore development of Lowell Citizens Academy similar to Lexington model in order to increase civic engagement and understanding of municipal government, seconded by Counselor Martin. Mayor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something I'd read about in Lexington each year. They might actually do it semi-annually. A group of citizens sign up to learn about all different kinds of aspects of city government and different department heads will come in and talk about the different areas of government. But I think, you know, particularly where it's becoming harder and harder to find people to fill board positions, that this is a good way to both increase civic engagement, but, you know, increase participation in a more involved way, and that it's, you know, the more people that we reach and the more people that are able to have a better understanding of municipal government, I think that gives us a better chance of spreading that throughout the city. And so I appreciate the report looking into what can be done. I think it's a fairly straightforward proposal. Thank you.
No further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next motion by Mayor Murphy. Request city manager develop welcome kit for new or returning residents to include information on public safety, recycling, voter registration, parking, and other information to better connect with residents, seconded by Counselor Mercier and Mayor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, you know, this isn't a new idea. People have bounced this idea around before. I think it's a good way to get at, you know, people understanding their role in the community and getting away from a more punitive code enforcement kind of culture and getting people to just understand what exactly the codes are. And so it's more really educational for people that are moving into the city, particularly where you see in, you know, rental units, multifamily, where there's a lot of turnover and there isn't necessarily the stronger ties to the community initially, that you have this introduction to the city, people know where to go for basic services, and they feel, you know, a part of the city of Lowell.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I just, a question on this. It's a good motion. Do you feel like this should be, I guess, to the maker of the motion, do you feel that this should be like the city website, though? Like, is this more than that? Because if we go to the city website, I'm thinking maybe that this is what it is. Just your thoughts on that.
Mayor Murphy?
Sure. I think it's probably a more proactive approach to it. The city website is there, and it's good to have all these kinds of information. But I think, you know, in terms of when people are first, for example, renting a unit, there's an opportunity there for landlords to be able to provide simple information, a simple packet from the city where it has information about recycling, it has information about where to vote, it has information about, you know, parking requirements, parking ordinances, so that you're focusing less as a city on those punitive actions and you're really devoting more time to making the city better in a more positive way. So I think it's, to answer the question more directly, it's more than just a city website. I think it's more proactive, and I think there are a couple of different opportunities, times, at which you could provide more information.
No further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next motion by Mayor Murphy. Request city manager and Economic Development Division work with city clerk to develop similar welcome to businesses or prospective businesses on programs and services available either when business certificates are issued or requested, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Mayor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's based on the same ideas that the last, although this really could provide more information for the economic development efforts that the city already provides, it could get more people that wouldn't necessarily know about the programs that are offered, either through the city or through other various agencies that the city informs, more proactive business men and women about. So I think there are, again, it's another opportunity to show that the city is being responsive and here to help people in their businesses and help them grow and just develop a better relationship between city government and its people. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. And when we develop this, I think it'd be a good idea, too, to also distribute to all the businesses to retouch and redevelop a rapport with them, too. So I think we, you know, not to complicate it, but I think it's a good idea, so we should expand this to existing businesses, too.
Mayor Murphy?
Just very briefly, you know, because of the nature of the business certificates being issued, it's, I think, entirely, you know, able, because it's done on a regular basis, I think you can capture the entire group. Mr. Clerk, you had something to add?
It's, the certificate's a good for four years.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next motion by Mayor Murphy. Request city manager present council with analysis of how adoption of the Community Preservation Act would further open space and recreation, affordable housing, and historic preservation goals, and outline options to place on preservation goals, and outline options to place on ballot, including a grid of various revenue scenarios, matching state revenue, and sector impacts depending on the percentage and exemptions proposed, seconded by Council Noon. Mayor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something that was actually raised in the 2003 master plan, that's something that's mentioned again in the updates and in our open space plan. I think it's something worth looking into. Perhaps in 2003, it didn't make as much sense for the city of Lowell, because it, I think it tended to favor suburban communities, but, but the, the funds that, that the state uses to match, funds that are raised locally, do come from, from local people. Over $4 million is raised from transactions through the registry of deeds here in the city of Lowell, and that's, that's all, those are all funds that are actually going to suburban communities that have adopted the Community Preservation Act and, and not ours, which supports programs like greater recreational facilities, open space, historic preservation, and of course, affordable housing. There were changes made in 2010, which really makes the adoption more palatable for a city like ours, so that you could work on some more capital projects involving recreation. Every, every, every year, every springtime, we come up with different projects that people in the community would like to see done, but we just don't have the resources to do it, and this is one way to do it, and to do it in a progressivized way that doesn't impact those who, who can really least afford it. So I think it's worth looking at all the data to see what, what makes sense, and, and to get a better idea of what, what adoption would mean, and what adoption with certain exemptions that are allowed, and certain percentages, percentages that are allowed locally would mean for, for the city of Lowell.
No further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye; any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next motion by Mayor Murphy. Request city manager report on the potential of an initiative similar to the best retail practices program to support small businesses improve their online presence, possibly to be later aggregated and linked to the Lowell.org site, seconded by Council Laurie. Mayor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is really an economic development effort, that the more businesses or potential businesses, home-based businesses, there, there are all kinds of smaller businesses that aren't online or don't have a, a real significant online presence, the more that the city might be able to support that kind of effort, I think that the more you can build up all of those, those small businesses and, and allow them to grow in, in a way that sustains the entire economy. So I would like to see whether it makes sense to work it either into the existing programs or to develop something new to, to help support that in a, in a less, you know, traditional physical way, because the nature of work is changing in some respects, and, and maybe not every business person has a storefront, but certainly these days, most people would have or have to have a, a website, and so this might be another way to offer some support to those business people. Thank you.
No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye; any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next motion by Mayor Murphy. Request city manager work with state delegation and sign department on state and local wayfinding signage toward Cambodia Town, seconded by Council Noon. Mayor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's been a number of things done in, in the lower highlands lately, but this is something that I've asked the state delegation to look into, and we just ask for the council's support and city manager's support in, in pushing this. There, there is opportunity, of course, we've, we've, you know, created some banners and some signage that will continue to develop in that area, but I think having a way to direct people off the highway, we have somewhere, and one of our signs is an icon for the revolving museum, which clearly isn't revolving anymore, so that might be an opportunity to, for a space for something like this. So it's to look into what we can do on pushing the, the state a little to, to, to get that going. Thank you.
Councilor Noon.
I think this would be the next step for the city, in order, the city, through the managers and the DPD have invested a number of resource to make it happen, and now we do have a Cambodian town. The next step would be that just to get our state delegation involved and have them help in term of having proper signage, so that people who want to visit Lowell, visit Cambodian Town, they know how to get there. So this is a great motion. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye; any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next motion by Mayor Murphy. Request city manager report on use of overtime for fire department, recommendations for achieving further reductions to station closings per shift, and prepare for discussion of long-term capital needs at a public safety subcommittee meeting, seconded by Council Noon. Mayor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over three years ago, but roughly three years ago, there was some significant, significant fire event that triggered, you know, the, some members of the fire department coming before the council and talking about how we get to reducing the number of, I know there was some confusion last week about what this motion actually calls for, but how we get to actually reducing the number of station closings per shift. And I think there has been significant progress since that day, through the use of overtime, through the use of increased resources, to be able to work that number down consistently. But this is to get an idea of what else is needed to further that, but also as we, as we entered discussions about our capital needs for the school department, what that, how that fits in with all of our other needs, particularly for, you know, public safety, for the fire department, police department. And so, you know, really with the capital plan, if you look through it, the fire department seems to have the most significant needs after the school department, and, and the most significant needs coming in the, in the near term. So I think it's a good time to sit down and, and discuss what, what the outlook is there, so that that all becomes a part of the larger discussion about how we reinvest in, in our civic infrastructure.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye; any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. If the mayor would resume the chair.
Next, we have under the city manager's portion of the agenda, communication from city manager responses to city council motions and requests. Council Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three that came back this week that I had asked for. First, I'd like to, I, I think Mr. Bakie, if he could answer, request the city manager have a proper department look into the possibility of placing stop signs on Shaw Street. I know a study was done earlier in the year, I think at the behest of the neighborhood group, and I had followed up with one, and I guess the, I know it comes back saying we don't need stop signs. There's been a talk of some speed problems in that area, and one of the ideas that was placed, could the city pension to change the speed limit there? Is it possible that the city on Shaw Street, I think that the speed limit's 30 miles an hour, is there any way that could be changed, or could we pension to change that?
Well, the, the speed limits are generally set by the state and following guidelines that are actually prescribed by the federal transportation authorities. And so in an urban location like this, the, unless posted otherwise, the streets are generally 30 miles per hour, and that's not something we have a tremendous amount of control over. Obviously, there are locations that can be designated as school zones and other specific things, which have very specific parameters that must be followed to implement those. So I think in, in reality, there's, there's not a lot of option to just reduce the speed limit. I think more importantly, however, merely changing the signage, even if you have the correct ordinance behind it, doesn't actually change driver behavior. And I guess I could call your attention to another item that's in your packet today about that very issue, dealing with Andover Street, where in fact, the, the state recognizes a legal speed limit on Andover Street of actually 40 miles per hour, but it's been posted at 35 for a number of years, even though that is not actually consistent with the laws and ordinances behind it, apparently. And interestingly, the driver behavior is consistent with the 40 mile an hour, which is prescribed by the state in large part because of the design characteristics of the roadway, and that really is what dictates how people will drive, much more than what you post as the speed limit.
Okay. Thank you. The other one was, I had put in a motion, again, it would be through the DPD on developing a local dollar program, and I want to thank them for their help. We were supposed to have Middlesex Community College here a few weeks ago, and they had to cancel, and we're still going to try to bring them in under the educational partnership. And I know they're looking for a card similar to the UMass U card, where you could use it local businesses, but I think that the dollar program is something the city could look into, especially with the university and the community college here, that may be quite successful in the future. We also had one that I put in regarding panhandlers, and I'd like to ask the city solicitor where we stand there on the, I'd like to see some type of issue, it's becoming worse. You can't step out of a store downtown at this point without the panhandlers really approaching you, and I'm not going to say there's a hundred, we probably have 15 or 20, I think, from what I can see, who are really aggressive, and the, the problem isn't just the panhandling, it's the fear they put into some people. Some of these individuals are at a lodge, and they could block your walkway, and it's really becoming a concern in the city, so what can we do at this point?
Well, pursuant to the opinion that I forwarded to the council, if, if it's the wish of the council, we can certainly begin to put together a, an ordinance along the lines, as outlined in the, in the opinion. The, as I noted, there was a recent panhandling ordinance that was, that was drafted and already has, has become the subject of litigation. That being said, I think overall, depending on how we do it, if it's done smartly, and, and it's narrowly tailored to, to suit very specific needs, particularly those in the downtown where, where most of this seems to be happening, then I think we have some very solid ground that we can, that we can rely on. And, and I think beyond that, working, excuse me, working with the manager's office, we can coordinate with the police department and, and maybe explore whether there's some existing laws that we can perhaps make better use of while we go through this process. And some of those are outlined in the opinion as well.
Yeah, the sooner, the sooner we, I, it's my belief anyway, which is why I put in the motion, the sooner we could get something back and, and try to put an ordinance in, it's, it's really becoming ridiculous. I'm talking to store owners who can't come out and work on their windows without being, at this point, it's harassed, it's not being asked, but it's actually being harassed by people. So I look forward to that report coming in and hopefully getting an ordinance that we could use as quickly as possible.
Right, well, that, that would be the, the next step to go beyond what we, what we already have. And again, the, the research would indicate that if we did it in a limited sort of, if we did it in a limited way, we would stand a much greater chance of being able to survive any sort of judicial scrutiny that may come our, come our way.
You know, it, it's going to be a challenge. I knew we, and I think it was the mayor who put this forward, the burst of stops downtown, where musicians can play, and they probably put out a hat, but they're not asking people, they're not stopping, they're not confronting people for money, and I know, and I don't know if they're even asking for money, but we do have areas downtown. I know we have certain charities, I know, I was a letter carrier, we ask people for money, the firefighters, so we, you know, I know we have to be careful on how that ordinance is written, but as far as the panhandlers are concerned, I think there's a, an easy distinction between those asking for charitable organizations as opposed to those confronting people, and that, that's the problem I have with it. So I look forward to that report. Thank you.
Council Leahy and then Council Kennedy.
Thank you. Touching base with Council Laurie's motion, do we need to put a motion on then, for you to proceed?
That'd probably be the proper next step.
All right, so next week, you should put a motion. Yeah, I'll put the motion in to proceed with it. That's what I plan to do, yeah. Okay. And the response to my signage on Bonneville, could we just, I appreciate that they went by and they put some signage up, but after speaking to the parents that brought this to my attention, it really is, you know, it's directed to the children, so if we could revisit that, if, I mean, if, if the department feels that that's good for children, I, I, what they did is maybe four signs, two going down and two coming up, it's just the green sign shows a pedestrian crossing, but, you know, the goal is to make sure that the kids know how to cross safe, as long as the traffic knows that kids are going to be there crossing. You know, we do have a sign at the daily school, and it still says, when lights are flashing, kids, you know, there's no lights there, so we need to make an effort, and if someone could revisit Bonneville, I don't know, what would, whatever's easier for you, if you want to speak to a couple of parents or get a little input and see what we'd like to do up there, that'd be great. The other motion was the, well, the panhandling, we did that one, the postage, I got an answer for my request for an answer on posting signage for properties according to the building permits. So it said in the report, when someone posts, when someone goes for a permit and they post a sign, someone does go out within the week to check that sign? Okay, I just want to make sure that that's happening, because the only one that I've noticed, and, and we brought it up before, was the, the posting at the Steadman Street, and it seemed like there was confusion on that, and that posting may have stayed there for a few weeks. So I just want to make sure that, you know, when these things get posted, we want to make sure we go out, make sure that the, they're legible from the street, is what the ordinance says. At the last meeting, we did say we were going to review this, so I'll let it go till then, but I just want to make sure that we are checking these. Thank you.
Council Kennedy and then Council Laurie.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am, my question was going to be the same as Council Leahy's, but in, in the interest of just expediting the situation, if Council Laurie wanted to make a motion about referring to the thing regarding my on the agenda, I'd be willing to second that motion.
I was just going to ask that, could we make that motion tonight to have the law department proceed with the ordinance for panhandling?
Second. Motion by Council Laurie, seconded by Council Kennedy. Discussion on the motion? Council Mercier.
I think, Mr. Mayor, that it is a good motion, and I was going to suggest that, too, and I think that we could have, and we did, but when we did get a recommendation of different regulations and different opinions from the city solicitor, it did say that if we establish the downtown as a Lowell historic district, and that we recognize and promote the historic significance of the downtown and the presence of the national park, it's quite relevant that we could establish it as an area of the National Park, it's quite relevant that we could establish it as an area where we wouldn't allow panhandling to take place. So that's what I would suggest, and I think that's a good idea, and, because I think it's hindering the businesses. I know that I've frequented some businesses downtown and was approached so much to the point where I just said, I can't deal with this. And I think people are thinking that, and it is true. There are people that was suggested by the mayor to promote themselves through entertainment or whatever, and have the cup down there, or a hat, that's a completely different thing. They're not bothering you, you can walk by them, I think that's a good thing. But I think we need something to help the businesses, and this is a good start for that motion, so I'm glad it's made today, I think it's good.
Any further?
Mr. Mayor.
Madam Solicitor.
So just a, a question, as far as the ordinance, then, the, the path that we would then follow is the one limited to regulations with respect to our downtown historic district?
Well, didn't, didn't you say to start there first, it's like a start?
Well, yeah, I was giving sort of a, some different approaches that, that we could conceivably take. I think that they, limiting it to a historic district, coupled with the fact that we do have the National Park, coupled with the, the fact that we have, and we could cite in a, in a preamble, the number of visitors and, and things, that that would be probably a fairly strong avenue to, to pursue, and it's one that we already have some legal precedent to support as well.
Right, because we are a destination city, there's a lot to like about Lowell. If they come here and that's their first impression, they're not going to be liking Lowell or coming back pretty soon, so, thank you.
Just, just quickly, if I could.
Counsel Lori.
To follow up with Counsel Mercier, and I saw that report, and that's fine, we did have some issues out on Plain Street and Bridge Street, but we do know now that if the owners of those properties put up no trespassing and no loitering, and they're having a problem, the police can come and ask those people to leave their private premises. So I think the way we're looking at this now may be the way to go.
The, the loitering really is connected to places of public transportation, and one of the things that I'd noted is that, in taking a look at our contract with respect to our parking garages, that's an area where, pursuant to the nature of the, the contract, we can make sure, and again, touch base with the contractor, and ensure that, that people are moving along and they're not lingering in the, in the garage, particularly those who have no business to, to conduct in the, in the garage. With respect to the suggestion of using that elsewhere, might be a little bit more difficult, but perhaps the, the best method is to roll out the, the downtown, if that's the most pressing issue now, and, and then, and then go from there and continue to take a look at this issue.
I want to thank you for that report, thank you very much.
Anyone else on the motion? Counsel Martin?
I agree with the historic district approach.
Counsel Elliott?
Thank you, we got a report, a motion regarding having a Lowell Plan presentation be forwarded to the council, and last week I had asked to see if we could also get copies of the annual report for the LDFC, and all I saw was a presentation, so I'm wondering if we could still get those, maybe a couple of years of the annual reports?
Counsel Kennedy?
It's a point of order, I don't, I don't think we took a vote on, on Counsel Lori's motion. So before we bring up something else, we should, we should vote on that motion, I think, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion on the motion? Allored in favor, singvai was saying aye, opposed, so voted, any discussion on further communications? Mr. Manager.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, we have a communication here that, in response to a request by Counsel Mercier, and we have Rachel Argeritis, is that right? It's a new name? So if I, if the council would indulge us, I would like to make a presentation to the council on the, some recommendations for improvements to the JFK Plaza, adjacent to City Hall, in response to the request that we find a way to honor the heritage and a number of monuments that we're seeking to place around City Hall. And I think we have some interesting ideas, that we not only do that, but also improve the overall aesthetics of the City Hall Plaza. So if I could turn it over to Adam and Rachel.
As the city manager said, we are interested in, in allowing for the opportunity for all ethnic groups to celebrate their heritage with the monument at City Hall, and one way that we're looking at this, however, is to look at the memorials as a whole, and to view it as the opportunity to design a cohesive whole that would really work for the City Hall Plaza in general. This is JFK Plaza, City Hall Plaza, and over the years, DPD has been working on long-term, a long-term design for the improvement, and most of all, the greening of City Hall Plaza. As you can see, and as we all know, it's a great public space, but it has, it is predominantly concrete and pavement, and we think we have a real opportunity to add lawn, more trees, and other green spaces. As part of this long-term goal to redesign the plaza, we have always included this idea of grouping the memorials and monuments, both for the future, the ones that will be coming to us in the future, into one area, to create one special area for the monuments. And we've come up with the concept of a memorial walk. This memorial walk would run from, along City Hall, from the Moody Street parking lot toward Arcand Drive, and this is picking up the, the line of Moody Street, the former Moody Street. And this walkway would be a wide pedestrian path with new pavement, as well as new trees, and the monuments could be placed on both sides of this sort of grand pedestrian walkway. They could be both alongside City Hall and under the new tree canopy that would be created with this line of new trees. This would be the location of the memorial walk. This is the view from Art, the sidewalk on Arcand Drive, looking towards Moody Street and the library. And then this is a rough but schematic rendering of what, what it could look like. So as I said, we, there's an opportunity to do a special pavement, a wide pedestrian pathway. On the right, you see the green off to the distance of City Hall Plaza and the new row of trees. And again, the concept here is to group the, oops, sorry, group the monuments together, as you see in the lower left, to present a whole design that works together. The lower left is actually a memorial garden of monuments they did at the new Yankee Stadium, and, and I'm guessing they had the same idea, to group everything together into, into one place, so it could be experienced as sort of a sculpture garden. There's also the opportunity to have special pavement, as you see in the lower left, and the upper, upper two photos show just the elaborate trees and, and plantings underneath them that we have the opportunity to do. This would leave the space in the center of City Hall Plaza open for a new green lawn that could be activated in the winter with things like skating rinks, and it could also be left open for the festivals and activities we already have there, such as the Folk Festival. This idea of a walkway linking Moody Street, the library area at Moody Street, to Arcand Drive is one that has been, has been developed over the years, as I mentioned before. This is a drawing by Sandy Swale, design planner at DPD, and you can see that she also, in her, in her previous design, picked up the same concept of creating this walkway from Moody Street to Arcand, and is also greening the space and expanding the planted areas. In addition, the Jeff Speck Plan also wanted to establish, reestablish that connection from, from Moody to Arcand. In this plan, you see that there's also the opportunity to expand JFK Civic Center into a diamond-shaped building, but you can see in the center that there's still this idea of leaving the middle green and open for the public. Oops, sorry. This would be a large undertaking, even the first phase to do just a memorial walk could cost around $200,000, depending on the details that we decide on. It also would require further design and engineering to arrive at those details and come up with a final, complete design. In addition to begin phasing in some of the greening of City Hall Plaza as a whole, could add an additional 150,000 or so, these are rough numbers, just to kind of get us started. But this project could definitely be phased and tackle it in manageable pieces to get the, the ball rolling for the design as a whole. And that's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager. Counsel Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Missed through you to the city manager, this is a good idea, it is a lot of money. I didn't have something so elaborate, but it's nice that people are thinking anyway, because it is beautiful-looking. So what do I say to people of Laos who want to put a stone there, a memorial stone, you know, in the immediate future? Because this looks like it's going down the road like ten years from now, so what do I tell them?
Well, we could talk about this further, but I think one option would be the area alongside City Hall, which is already landscaped, and we could remove some of the existing shrubs to allow them a spot. And as you said, although, although this is an elaborate plan, it's so, their, their monument as well as the others would be part of a greater design. But I think there is probably at least three or four spots next to City Hall, which would be available.
Well, they would be interested in one of those. I didn't hear from other ethnic groups. I did include other groups in the future, if they so desired to do that, and I see you have that plan, and I know that probably in the spring, and we'll be seeing the Armenian memorial stone, and they have brain, brain stakedly had fundraises and raised 38,000 to create a magnificent, meaningful structure of, of granite or whatever it's made out of, but it's going to be beautiful, and so the Laotian people probably couldn't spend that much money, but they're concerned, and they asked me, and, and I think I'll be sending them down to see you then, because that's the immediate plans for them, they're concerned about it. So that's fine, but to say that you have these plans in place, it's really beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Lori?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just looking at some of the plans, and I know Boston's trying to, Boston City Hall is trying to do something similar, UMass Lowell at Fox Hall. I mean, if you were going to look at, I was a history major, had to study art history, but if you look at those early sixties, mid-seventy buildings, probably best described as drab, you know, just concrete. My other question is, and I really like the plans, the JFK Civic Center itself is a tribute to Chris Rusus and other fallen police officers. On the side of City Hall, there's the tribute to the firefighters. We would keep the integrity of both those areas?
Great, great.
I think so. I don't think, I don't think we have the intention, intention of, of moving things, you know, unless they want it to be part of it. And you know, there, you know, there's opportunity, as I said, with the horizontal pavement, to, to have other layers of memorials, but no, it's not our intention to move, move things that are existing at this point.
Half the same with Boston's doing, and a little bit with you Lowell. I'm really impressed by these plans, it's really well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Martin?
Yeah, this, I know the manager had provided us some months back with the original Olmsted landscape plan, which I, I was not aware that, that this was an Olmsted design at first. And, you know, we have, you know, a world-renowned designer who's done great work here in Lowell, Rogers Fort Hill Park, and, and some other places, and to have that type of design here at City Hall is, I think, something we should be celebrating. So my question is, is this sort of faithful to that design? I know it's kind of been merged over the years, but how, how much of that is going to be left, if anything?
Well, I'll let Rachel answer it, because, but I, I would say that the, the main, the design is remaining intact, this is in addition to that, but.
Yes, that would be my answer as well, that this wouldn't, I've looked at the Olmsted plans, and they, they go around the library and City Hall, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't go within that, those boundaries, the Olmsted boundaries.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Leahy?
None on this, but just under the other information in the packet.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, through you to the manager. You gave us some information on Lowell Memorial Auditorium.
Correct.
It looks like they have a good start over there. My question was just that, they mentioned that they're looking at updates for the building in and around, so have they mentioned, or part of it is where we redesigned the street? So we have, my concerns are the lighting over there. So we have two crosswalks, it looks like the newer one is the correct one now?
Correct.
The old one, I imagine, will be painted out?
Correct.
And then just the, the lighting, it's, though, I understand we bought, those are part of the lights that we bought?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just, it doesn't seem like it's bright enough?
Okay.
Especially nights when the policemen are out there directing traffic across. I'm concerned that, you know, someone's going to get hit, especially the policeman.
Right.
But it, also, could you, I don't know when we do this, but a number of those lights are either out or broken, and in my travels up to the boat, the Regatta, this weekend at 5:00 AM, when I, you're going to drop the high school kids off, there's probably about thirty lights out all throughout the downtown that we own.
Okay.
So if we could just double-check that, but if, if we could make improvements by the auditorium, that'd be great, too.
Sure, well, we've, we've added some lights, or in the press, failing lights, we'll, but we'll certainly check on the outages, right? Whenever we see them, we report them in, and I, I know myself, I, as I drive through the downtown at various nights, I'll.
Yeah.
Mark them down and get them to Henry, and we'll get them in, so we'll, we'll double-check on all those.
Okay.
But if I, if I could.
Yep.
I appreciate you raising the, the report from the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, because I do think it's very good news. The number of events is, as you see in the report that was provided to me by, by Mr. Baiki, we have, we're on track to host as many as 138 events this year, which compares very favorably with the number of events held in other years. And we're also ahead of budget with respect to net income. Now, we're not sure, we can't say that's definitely going to stay that far ahead, because there is a number of other costs coming through, but it's, it does certainly reflect well on where we are right now with the, with the auditorium. And was also indicated, we will be awarding to a food and beverage concessionaire within, we're negotiating on a contract now, and I'll be updating the council on that in the near future. But I'm happy to say that it is a, in all likelihood, is going to be a local company that we'll have in place.
Counsel Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just elaborate a little bit on Counsel Leahy's suggestion about lights and the darkness, I just want to just give you a thought that someone put in my ear that made a lot of sense. Let's say that in your own household, you have a light and it burns out, and then you take a bulb and you put it back in there. You could make it a lot cleaner, a light brighter, if you take that globe off and wash it.
Right.
And I think that what's happening in the city is, they're replacing the bulbs, but it's the globe itself that is dirty, so it's creating darkness. I don't know how we go about it, but we have to have a way to clean the, the globe. I think that's going to add a lot of brightness, I think.
I, I know that we do that on occasion, in some schedule of sorts, but a number of them do need, it's constant maintenance that needs to take place.
Right, right, thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Just one quick thought to that, the, the tops of the lights are different on Merrimack's, on East Merrimack than throughout the downtown? Was that just when they were changed out, or? Because I, I find the ones at the auditorium aren't as bright as the clear ones downtown, they have the plastic top on it, and you can see right through them. The ones going up East Merrimack Street seem to be like a frosted globe?
I'll, I'll check on that, I, I haven't noticed that.
What's your favorite piece of lighting in the downtown? What's your favorite piece of lighting in the downtown?
I missed that.
Do we have any further discussion on lighting? Any further discussion on communications? Motion to accept and place on file, so moved by Council M'Donce, seconded by Council Noon. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have an order for a 60-day trial for Don Street. Motion to waive the full reading by Council M'Donce, seconded by Council Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted in city council order pursuant to Chapter 266 of Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts. Concerning Section 266, there are entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. So wish the council.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Council Mercy, seconded by Council M'Donce. Roll call, please.
Council Lori?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council M'Donce?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Next, we have a vote to apply, accept, expend a grant of $6,750,000 to the Massachusetts Prevention Wellness Trust Fund grant through the Department of Public Health. Motion to waive the full reading by Council Mercy, seconded by Council Lori. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted in city council vote. Authorizing the city manager to, to apply, accept, and expend funds for the Massachusetts Prevention Wellness Trust Fund grant to the Department of Public Health in the amount of $6,750,000. So wish the council. Council Martin?
I move to approve, but I have a question also.
Motion to approve by Council Martin, seconded by Council M'Donce. Council Martin?
Just, I mean, this is pretty ambitious, I just don't know, is this a new program? Have we tried to do anything like this in the past, Mr. Manager?
This is a, this is a brand-new program, so this is something, and as you can see from the report, it includes a number of different partners that we have. The Greater Lowell Health Alliance is very much involved with this, but we have the local hospital, the health center, the VNA, CTI, I don't want to leave anyone out here, but our health department, school department, DPD, is, you know, really bringing people together to focus on these, these particular health issues.
You know, that's what drew my attention to it, was all the partner agencies, virtually every healthcare provider in the city, so see what happens.
We're, we're hopeful, we're hopeful.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Lori?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council M'Donce?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Next, we have a communication from the city manager to appoint Jared Nutter to the election commission. Wish the council. Move to approve? Move to approve by Council Lori, seconded by Council Martin. Council Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I saw this appointment on the agenda, Mr. Manager, I have to say, I thought it was a typo or, or a mistake. I also think it's a joke, because no one can take this nomination seriously. Election commissioners should be people who don't have an axe to grind with so many in the community, they don't have a horse in the race, and they can be impartial. Because we need to ensure that the voting process is not tainted. This individual is clearly based biased. He has a long pattern of negativity on his blog, and bashing city councilors, school committee people, the clerk, and even private citizens. Here's some examples, just so the public at home will know what I'm talking about. Reference the city clerk, that he was essentially a liar, lying to the sun. Reference the city council to my left as caving to political pressure. Reference Council Mercy as a panderer, and that at one point, she embarrassed her members, the members of this council, because she had a difference of opinion. That we called a special meeting of the Housing Authority, this was before the AG report came out, saying it was just an opportunity for councilors to spew hate, and those that have a personal vendetta. These attack members of the Greater Lowell Voc, elected officials. So I say, how can we have a person in the election commission with so many connections to city councilors, and as well as has a close relationship to you, Mr. Manager? In my opinion, I, I feel you're awarding someone who's attacked councilors to challenge you, and has more often than not praised you, especially in the recent weeks. So I think, I think this pick is as far from professional as you can get. As I said the day, the other day, I, I feel it's pure political cronyism. I don't think we should be rewarding bad behavior. To put this person in the election commission would set a horrible precedent, basically showing you can trash public officials and get rewarded with an appointment to one of the top city boards. I suppose this was the most troubling, Mr. Manager. When he wrote this about Mary, a war-respective activist in the city, he wrote, "Are you and Prince Charming sharing STD medicine, sexually transmitted disease medicine? So it's not working, or yet, does your bizarre hatred for me cloud your eyesight? Get off your knees, send your customer home, and actually read the item. If your STD clears up, maybe the eyesight will return." Someone who writes like this, who writes something like this to a woman, talking about STD medicine, implying she's a prostitute, has no place in city government. But, so, well, so do you think it's appropriate, Mr. Manager, for anyone to write something like this about a woman? Do you think someone who writes like this should be serving on a city board? I make a motion to send this nomination back to you, Mr. Manager, because I'm not going to support anyone that speaks or references, in addition to the other, references the people in this community, but in particular, a woman in our community, we should not be supporting this motion. And I, I make a motion to send this nomination back to the city manager.
Second the motion. Substitute motion by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Kennedy. Any discussion on the substitute motion? Council Leahy?
Well, I mean, I guess I have a question about, is that a fair and accurate statement? So is that something we can ask tonight, or what?
Is what a fair and accurate?
Well, what the council are read, is that something that actually was said? Does anybody know that, that that's truth? I mean, we're going to make a decision now on what I believe is good information, but you know, is it true or not, so?
Who's that addressed to?
Well, I don't know, can we, does the manager know? Can we ask the candidate, or what do you do in a situation like this?
I, I don't, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Manager?
I don't, I don't memorize or, you know, what's, what's put on the blogs. I mean, I have been myself the, been criticized by Mr. Nutter. I take that in stride, I get upset for a few moments, well, longer, I even communicate it to him, but then I, I move on from that. When I was making this appointment, I looked at Mr. Nutter's clear interest in what's good for the city. He's a concerned citizen, he has his opinions, as I said, some I agree with, some I don't. I do think he's of the highest integrity in terms of the operation of our elections. I think to question his integrity is wrong. I think he's, loves this city, and I think he's a hard worker that's interested in serving the city. And that's what I looked at when I was appointing him. As I said, do I agree with everything he writes? No. But I, you know, I set those things aside, and what I feel is the right person for the job at hand, and I'm comfortable that he will do a good job on the election commission.
Council Elliot?
So apparently you think it's okay for someone to write these things in a blog, Mr. Manager, about women, and then appoint them to a board? Because that's, that's what you're saying. I, you know what? I don't read his blog, but people in the city do, and this was sent to me by a woman, and actually, not by the woman who he was referencing. So I don't spend any time on the blogs, Mr. Manager, unlike you. So if you do spend that time, maybe you should, so much time on the blogs, then maybe you should be looking and doing some research on these appointments that you're bringing forward to a blog, because this came to me via an email, it was copy and pasted from his blog site, which has since been taken down. So if this is untrue, I don't know where else this individual got it from, because it came from a woman, right from the blog.
Well, I-
Mr. Manager?
Again, I, I, I wouldn't characterize myself as spending a lot of time reading on the blogs, that's a bit of an editorial comment. I do read just about everything out there, and I don't recall that one specifically, it may be on there, it, I, you know, I assume it probably was. But again, I don't think it takes away from the fact that he's a good, hard-working, you know, long-time, lifetime Lowell resident that will do well for the city, and that's, that's my primary concern.
Council Lori?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Mr. Nutter's here tonight, I'm not familiar with everything he writes, I, I've known Jerry since probably 1980s, we both worked at the post office, I know he's been involved with the church, Saint Michael's, he's very active, he's very active in Little Leagues, he's very active, really, in Seneville. Has he taken shots at me? Yeah, you want to jump in the ring, you're going to get your nose bloodied. I've done that in the column a few times. But I, I think Mr. Nutter's here tonight, if he wants to say a few words, if that'd be okay. I'm not familiar with these writings, again, I mean, this is turning into like the Supreme Court confirmation, where you're going through graduate papers. I, I don't know, I, I don't read the blogs, but if Mr. Nutter wants to come forward and speak to it, I, that would probably be the best thing, I think.
Council Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, I just have a question here. Some time ago, when we were looking to fill a position in the Board of Trustees at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, I think you reached out to the veterans to see if they could submit three names or four names or whatever, is that true?
I believe that's required, that I asked them to provide me-
It's required, and you did that, right?
Yes.
Now, did you then go out to the Democrat, Democratic Party, because it's a Democratic replacement, isn't it, Marc Briere?
That's correct.
It's a Democrat, so did you go to the Greater Lowell Democrats?
I did not.
Would you think that would have been a good idea if you would have done that?
Uh-
And asked them to submit four Lowellians that-
Yeah.
Were upstanding people in the Democratic?
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't recall doing that for the election commission people that I've done in the past. I did contact the chairman of the, well, chairman, one of the Republican, one of the members of the Republican City Committee, back when I needed a Republican for the License Commission and for the Election Commission, with all due respect to Council M'Donce, Republicans are a little harder to find in the city. So I did ask that, sort of spread the word, and they gave me a number, they gave me a number of names, not officially from the Republican City Committee, but no, I didn't, I didn't do any of this.
And so how many people applied for this?
I believe I interviewed six people, that all Democrats, one a recent Democrat, and so that was, you have to be a Democrat for at least two years, you have to be a member of the political party for at least two years. Then I had three other people that had interest in continuing to work on political campaigns.
They, they wanted to be on the commission, the election commission, and they still wanted to work on someone's campaign?
Correct. And so I, I had to rule them out. So those are the, those are the two categories of people, really, that I had, and I felt that, and Mr. Nutter was not in that position where he wanted to work on campaigns.
You see, I wanted to support Jerry Nutter, because I wanted to get him out of that blog, because I think it stunk, okay? I mean, to some degree, blog is bizarre, but I think, and I'm going to tell you, he's been always fair to me, did he croak me at times? Yes, yes, he has croaked me at times, but I think that I had such a relationship that I could pick up the phone and say, Jerry, what are you talking about? This, you got this all wrong, that was not my intention. He supported chickens, I didn't support chickens, we, we're not compatible people. Do I think he's qualified to be on the election commission? Personally, I do, personally, I do. But what's troubling me is, he's going to resign from this blog site, and I, and I'm happy about that. And I said that I would support him, but I'm thinking now, why is he not going to, he has, he's on the radio show on Saturday morning, so he gives out the blog site, and on Saturday morning, he bashes people in. So I, I, I don't know what to think now.
Well, we-
So if he comes to the podium, I want to ask him, what is your intention? Because I think it should be a neutral position. If I were Council Elliot, if I were Council Ed Kennedy, maybe I would not support him.
Right.
There are bloggers that if you bring their name here, I would choke myself to death, okay? I would never support them, if, if I was dying, I wouldn't. So, I mean, I don't have the same feeling for this gentleman, I think his knowledge is very, very good. I'm sorry, he bashes people to sometimes very embarrassing, and, and he'll be the first to admit it, but, and I know the woman that he did say that about, it's actually not a nice thing to say, it wasn't really true, she's an upstanding young woman, and if that were said about me, I think I would have slapped your face. But the fact remains that, I don't know which way to go, I'm leaning towards him, if people don't want to support him, that's, but I'd like him to come up to the podium, I want to know what he's going to do about Saturday morning. To say, I'm not going to have a blog anymore, but I'm going to rip you apart on Saturday morning, that doesn't cut it either, that's not being neutral. I don't know what to think right now, I'm kind of up in the air with this, I'm not going to kid you.
Council Kennedy, then Council Lori?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I've been told that the Red Sox won, game three, won to nothing, so that's good. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, on the matter at hand, you interviewed Mr. Nutter?
Yes, I did.
And you did that on the phone or in person?
In person.
Okay. And I'm sorry, how many other people did you interview?
I, I said six, I actually believe it was five, I'm trying to go through, I don't have all of them in front of me, but I think it was actually five.
And did you interview those people in person?
Yes, I did.
In, in the office?
Yes, I did.
And so a lot of those people, but you did not reach out to the, I remember that when we had an appointment on for a Republican to the, to the election commission, that you did contact the Republican City Committee about candidates?
I didn't actually contact the Republican City Committee, I reached out to Cliff Krieger, who's a local Republican. I'm not sure if he's the chairman of the Republican City Committee, or just involved with the Republican City Committee, but I asked him to, if he knew of people that were interested in serving.
Okay.
The Republicans that-
Right.
-travel together.
In this instance, you did not reach out to the Democratic City Committee, or to the Greater Lowell Area Democrats, or any other Democratic organization?
I did not.
Okay. Was there a reason why you didn't do that?
Uh, no, no reason, just I advertised a position, I had people that applied, and, you know, we, I interviewed them.
And you've included Mr. Nutter's resume on the back, right?
Right.
Of your communication? I'm assuming that's Mr. Nutter's resume?
That's correct.
Okay. And out of the five or five people, the five including Mr. Nutter?
Correct.
Is that how it went? And out of the five, he was the best that, of the people that you, uh-
I, I believed he was the best, yes.
That's, I have nothing else.
Counsel Lori.
As I said a few minutes ago, I, um, I'm not familiar with those writings. I very seldom look at the blogs. I'll look at them, but I try to stay off. I get beat up as much as anyone, I guess. I never heard that comment, and I would concur with Counselor Mercia. If that was written about me, I'd probably be pretty upset. Being a public figure, you know, if someone wants to take a shot at me, that, that's, but I've never had a shot taken like that. As I said earlier, Mr. Nutter's here. If he wants to get up and speak to these, and I'm not familiar with all his writings, so if he would like to speak on them.
Counsel Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, you know, I, I wouldn't consider myself a reader of the blogs either, although I am, you know, occasionally people forward things to me. So I know, um, Mr. Nutter said things about me that I don't like. It's probably true of all of us sitting here. But I, I think he has, and he has said publicly he's going to give up this blogging, uh, pastime, I guess, whatever you want to call it, which I think is helpful. And it's not actually just about the city council here. The Election Commission's in charge of all the elections in the city, um, not just city elections, but we run state elections here, we run national elections here. And we have sort of a history of, uh, election commissioners who've been quite vocal partisan advocates, uh, in the past, uh, who are not, have not shied away from criticism of maybe not necessarily city councilors, but certainly people that are running for office. So I do think it would be helpful for most, uh, election commissioners to kind, try and stay above, um, you know, active engagement in, um, certainly campaigns, but, um, you know, political discourse in, in general. So, um, I'd take Mr. Nutter at his, at his word, at least what I've read about him publicly, that he, he plans to stop that. Um, and given, you know, that, you know, the perfect candidate, you know, likely does not exist. I mean, the very nature of your interest in this position means you probably, uh, engaged in some sort of political discussion, political activity in the past. So, um, you know, if this is, uh, you, so, you know, I don't have an issue with the appointment. I think it's part of the kind of tradition we've had here in the city where you get outspoken people from time to time. But it, but we do have, the flip side of that is you have somebody who's committed and willing to serve and interested in what's going on here.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I don't read blogs, and I'm told that I too was criticized by Mr. Nutter. I may not agree with what he said, but I feel that his, you know, um, he can be impartial on the Election Commission. And face it, he's going to serve the remaining of Mr. Mark Brier term, so, um, you know, it's give you opportunity to see how he, you know, perform or how he does as a new Election Commission. And it's going to be incumbent on the manager to bring him back on before the council to renew his term. So, um, that said, I, I'm, I stay to support his nomination, um, you know, and he's expressed his opinion, and we may not agree with it. It may hurt people, it hurt me sometime or a time, but, you know, he entitled to his own opinion. Thank you.
Counsel M'Donce.
Yes, uh, it's tough when you have to deal with someone that you might find objectionable, uh, but I'm looking at the position and whether or not the person could be impartial in the functioning of the duties. And at the moment, I'm going to take him at his word that that's the case. Yeah, the position itself is not entirely impartial. We're asking for two Republicans and two Democrats, obviously partial to either side. Rather, we're looking more for balance. We have two of each, and three of them have to agree in order to proceed with whatever actions they take. So there's a whole commission. We're not relying on just the one person. And I certainly don't endorse some of the things that have been written. I don't know a lot of the things that have been written. I, this is the first time I'd heard the, the quote this evening. Certainly, I wouldn't agree with, uh, that, but some people are outspoken. And then sometimes I'd rather have someone whose allegiance is unknown than someone whose allegiance is a secret and just appear impartial. At the moment, uh, having had been interviewed by the manager and being recommended, uh, I'm going to go along with that determination that, of the candidates, and some of them, some of the others may well have been very well qualified, but as you stated, they wanted to continue to work on other people's campaigns, which would be counter to being impartial while performing the duties of the Election Commission. So in a sense, became disqualified and not less qualified. So at the moment, I have no reason not to accept the recommendation and approve this appointment. And what I plan to do for the, unless I hear something really egregious, uh, that would prevent him from performing the duties. And, uh, I did see him put out an email that he'd asked for the Ethics Commission to rule on his, uh, participation on the radio show. And I assume he'll abide by that if there's any potential ethics violation, that he would remove himself from that program as well.
Any further discussion on the motion, which is to send the appointment, uh, back to the manager for Counsel Kennedy?
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to add one more thing. I, I think that anybody that goes through, uh, Mr. Nutter's blog and the, the history of Mr. Nutter's blog would, it would only take a short time before you found something that was, um, distasteful or that you didn't like. And I think that it's a real reach to expect that somebody that wasn't impartial yesterday and wasn't impartial today is going to all of a sudden be impartial tomorrow. Maybe, maybe you, you can accept that. I just, I, I don't believe that.
Any further discussion? Counsel Elliot.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, I was actually going to say the same thing Counsel Kennedy did, but you know what? It's, oh, you know, it's not acceptable to, you know, to criticize, you know, people, elected officials, uh, in such a sort of venomous way, but I understand, because I didn't even reference myself, and I have been his prime target. That's not the, that's not the troubling issue. The issue is impartiality. But I think this is a setback for women in, in this community. If he's willing to do this and speak and share something on the internet, that speaks volumes, as far as I'm concerned. And supportive of this, supporting this nomination is a setback for women.
Roll call. Excuse me, I had asked if we could hear from Mr. Nutter.
You would, you would require a motion. Motion to suspend the rules by Counsel Lori?
A, object to suspension of the rules.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There's a second by Counsel Mercia. There's only two objections required. Roll call on the suspension of the rules?
No.
Counsel Martin?
No.
Counsel M'Donce?
Well, what's, Moses failed.
There's two.
Is this on the suspension of the rules?
And you're voting no?
Yes, I'm, yes. I'm sorry.
Yes, on the suspension of the rules?
Counsel M'Donce?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
No.
Counsel Kennedy?
No.
Two nays, there's no suspen- suspension of the rules?
Move the question.
Move the question. Roll call, please. Again, this is on sending the nomination back to the city manager.
Counsel Lori?
No.
Counsel Martin?
No.
Counsel M'Donce?
No.
Counsel Mercy?
No.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
Counsel Noon?
No.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
No.
Two yays, seven nays. Failed.
The original motion then is to approve the, uh, appointment of Mr. Nutter to the Election Commission. Counsel Lori.
Gee, just for a point, uh, when I first came on the council, I had asked that the appointees be here tonight. Now, usually they wait till after the confirmation to speak, but I don't see why there'd be a problem to allowing him to speak.
We just, we just-
I know that, what I'm saying is the council rules that they're here.
We just had a vote on the suspension of the rules to see, see whether or not he wanted to speak or not.
We're not talking about a suspension of rules, though. What I said was, when I first came on the council, I made a motion that they be here the night of their confirmation.
And he is.
Normally, they speak after the confirmation. That's my only question.
Roll call on the vote.
Counsel Lori?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel M'Donce?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
No.
Counsel Kennedy?
No.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yays.
Now, Counsel Lori, if Mr. Nutter wants to say anything, he, he may.
Thank you. Thank you to the members of the city council. Uh, I appreciate your, your vote, and I will do my best to be impartial, uh, to address the, uh, article that, that Counsel Elliot mentioned. Back when I first started blogging, um, I, I could give it out, but I probably couldn't take it as well as I should have. And, uh, people were allowed to blog on my blog anonymously, and after receiving a couple personal shots, I did lose my temper and post exactly what he read. But I also posted an apology the next day, and I have done that on several other occasions. Counselor Mercia, to your question about WCAP, I have never used, uh, WCAP to bash people because I am a guest on somebody else's show, but I have also submitted a, um, question to the State Ethics Commission, and should they rule that I should step away, I will follow their instructions implicitly. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Next, we have report, Subcommittee Report of the Education Partnership Subcommittee, October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Counsel Lori.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight, the Educational Partnership met with the University of Lowell, and the presentation was on the economic effect, how UMass Lowell benefits the city. Um, in attendance was myself, Counselor Kennedy, Counselor M'Donce, Counselor Lee, Counselor Martin, Counselor Mercy, and Counselor Resna Noon. Basically, it was the same presentation that the university gave at the Lowell Plan. The chancellor talked about the size of the campus, the emerging campus, uh, a little bit about the Saungus Arena, how well that's going, ten million dollars of improvements that they've spent locally on that, on, on the arena, um, a little bit on, uh, parking revenues, revenues at the AART going forward, the university crossing, uh, how many students are coming in, um, and staying there, and how much money, of course, that comes into the local economy. What I found surprising was, well, actually, two things. The chancellor said there's five hundred and sixty-one Lowell residents employed at the university at two, twenty-four point three million dollars in salaries. That's a lot of money in the local economy, and that doesn't count people living outside the city who spend their money here. He talked a little bit about the UMass Lowell police, and the police chief was here from the university, the partnerships they share with the city. One aspect that I really found interesting that I, I really didn't know, we usually hear how the university's taking property from the city off their tax rolls. They talked tonight about the Lawrence Mills and how the U, UMass gave up their rights of ownership in the Lawrence Mills so the city could move on. Presently, there's three hundred and thirty-five condos in that, in that area. It has a thirty-five million dollar value, and that brings in six hundred thousand dollars in property taxes. They actually gave up their rights there, so they have taken some property, namely the, um, ICC in St. Joe's, which was about eight hundred thousand dollars in arrears, and now they, that's been caught up. So that's been the, the talk of the presentation, what the university's doing for the economy locally, and that's just about the summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any discussion? Counsel Martin.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think it was an informative, uh, meeting, and we heard a lot, I think, in the presentation about economic development and, um, economic spinoff from activity at the university. And it's no secret, you know, every, every new building is construction jobs. Every new student brings, you know, more faculty, jobs that way, more student services, more demand for housing. So all of that, I think, is having some impact on the economy. But I think what, what we really, uh, need to focus on, and I think Chancellor Mian agreed with this at the meeting, as did the city manager, is that the real impact for significant change is the innovation and research that comes out of UMass Lowell. You know, research universities, um, sometimes hit on the next big thing, and that ends up being a major employer in a re, a region. But it doesn't necessarily have to be the next big thing. It could be a whole bunch of small, little things, um, that collectively add, uh, to, you know, innovation, job opportunities, economic growth, and in turn, jobs for our residents and residents of the whole region. So that, I think, is, um, something we haven't seen in large amount, although there's certainly things going on at the university that are producing jobs, their medical device program, their robotics program, their plastics engineering program, just to name a few. But they're, uh, very well cognizant of the opportunity that exists for future job, job growth to come out of the research that's going on today at UMass Lowell, and I think that gives us all reason for optimism. So, um, chancellor pledged to work with the city. He was complimentary of the cooperation he's getting from the city, and I think, um, as UMass Lowell continues to prosper and thrive, the city of Lowell will continue to prosper and thrive, and our residents hopefully will share in that benefit. So I think some of that is happening now, but my hope is that the best is still yet to come, and we need to, uh, keep our eye on the job prize that's, uh, coming, emerging out of the university.
Thank you. Any further discussion in the report? Counsel Kennedy?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I just would like to add that I, I think, I think the, the best is yet to come, and I think that's part of, of what we heard, um, earlier this evening. I, you know, I think that we're fortunate in that, um, you know, during this time, we have, uh, Chancellor Mian is from Lowell. I think he's quite willing to, to, to work with Lowell to, um, on economic development. I think that he has a lot of, um, a lot of things in place, and, you know, the city just has to kind of catch up with them or take advantage of those. And, uh, and hopefully that will, um, result in some meaningful economic development in the next couple of years. Thanks.
Counsel Lori?
Thank you. Very quickly, I just gave a rundown, but Counselor Martin and Counselor Kennedy's right, we didn't really talk as much as I would have liked on the M2D2, um, and what that's going to bring to the city possibly. I think there's still a lot of work to do there, and, but if it does come to pass, it's going to be a great thing for the city. The other, the other area, and it's just starting, is the Robotics Center up at the O'Macom Building. And as much as M2D2, um, with the emerging incubators, I, I think the Robotics Center, it could, could really explode much quicker, and, and with an economic base like that in the city, I think that's a real possibility in the next four to five years. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion in the report? Entertaining the motion to accept the report is a report of progress, so moved by Counselor Madonza, seconded by Counselor Mercia. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Under general petitions, we have one claim for personal injury and one claim for property damage. I entertain a motion to refer to the Law Department for a report and recommendation, so moved by Counselor Kennedy. Seconded by Counselor Mercia. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. First motion by Counselor Leahy, request the city manager of proper department move the bus sign located at 438 Varnum Avenue. Seconded by Counselor Laurie. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. This is just a request that came from a person living at this address. The bus stop is basically right past her driveway. So the problem she's having is people waiting for the bus, they're hanging around her yard littering. And more importantly, as the nights get short, as the nights get darker, they're looking into her house. So if this is something we can address quickly, I don't know if we need permission from the LTA, but it just needs to go back on the other side of her driveway so they're not invading her privacy. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next motion by Counselor Leahy and Counselor Kennedy, request the city manager provide a quarterly report to the council on motion responses. Not requiring a second. Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Leahy?
Sure. I'll go first. Thank you. Mr. Manager, this is just something that we started on the school committee side a few years ago. It'd just be a way for us to track our motions, make sure that they get answered. And it's just an easy way, it seems like an easier way just to keep track of which ones are settled and which ones aren't. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Motion by Counselor Laurie, request the mayor to send a letter to the governor's office as well as to congressional members, the House and Senate requesting an increase in mental health spending. Seconded by Counselor Mercia. Counselor Laurie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to amend it. When I originally started looking at this problem, we were having some problems with the state, with the governor and the House going back and forth on the budget. That since has been completed, and there's actually a sizable increase in mental health spending in the state. So I'd like to amend this, make a motion to amend it, have the request the mayor send a letter to the congressional members requesting an increase in mental health spending. That would be at the federal level. Mental health spending has been cut in this country since the mid-1980s. And when we talk about the homeless problem in the city and in the area, a lot of these issues tend to come from mental health issues. And without the proper spending nationally and within the state, many of these people fall through the cracks. And it's just a thing on my point, on my part. If we could send a letter to the House and our members of the Senate requesting that the government really start increasing its mental health spending, I think it would do a lot of good for a lot of people who really aren't getting the treatment they need today.
Any discussion on this motion? To the make of the motion, as it is addressed to me, I would just...
Request the mayor send a letter to the congressional, our congressional members in the House and Senate requesting an increase in mental health spending.
I would just ask for more clarification. Is there a specific bill you're wishing to support? Is there...
There's no bill. Just send a letter to our Congresswoman, Nikki Saungus, and the senators. Requesting an increase in mental health spending in Washington. There's, I don't know if there's a bill in place, but just asking that they consider bringing it up in Washington to increase mental health spending.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next motion by Counselor Laurie, request the mayor send a letter to our state representatives and governor requesting a law be drafted to provide counseling for patients that are being removed from pain medications and other medications that may lead to long-term addiction. Seconded by Counselor Leahy. Counselor Laurie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, much of the problem here in the city has to do with drug addiction, which is, in many cases, a form of mental health. It's a mental health issue. They're self-medicating. Last week, we had the public safety meeting here about increasing police spending, more police officers. Yes, when you talk to the police, 70, 80% of the crimes, I remember former police, LaValley, talking, solely do the drugs. And we're learning now that many of these people were people who formerly had no problems with drug abuse. They're on medications for a long period of time, and they come off, and now they're addicted. And the addiction becomes a lifelong problem. So when I looked at it, I said, well, you go to the doctors, they write the prescriptions. But I don't think there's that medium for counseling, are you ready to come off, or when you do come off, what you need to do to really stay off the illegal drugs. And that's the basis for it, is that counseling would be given to patients coming off. We spend so much money on prescriptions, but maybe for a couple of hours of counseling for many of these people, that may be the difference between coming off the medication successfully and all turning to really an addiction.
Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Elliott?
I understand the premise behind it is these individuals need counseling. But do we need to be requesting a delegation to draft a law to do this? I mean, I guess I don't understand what we're trying to achieve here. I think we know that there's a problem, you know, that medications, you know, opiate problem, there is a problem. I think it has the attention of the delegation. But is there a specific law that we're looking to have the delegation draft?
Just for counseling.
Counselor Laurie?
The counseling would be part of the process of coming off long-term pain medication and other addicting drugs. That their doctors' offices could send them for counseling.
Any further discussion? I mean, I guess, as, again, the...
There's no bill down in...
Person, Counselor, just before you speak, allow me to finish. Because it is addressed to me, and the previous motion is similarly worded, it's overly vague. The problem isn't defined clearly enough. There's really, it's just kind of out of thin air, asking for support for something that's not defined at all.
Well, you're right, it is out of thin air because there's no bill that I know of at the federal level to increase mental health spending. I'm just asking that you send a letter. There is no bill at the State House, and I do have a list from Counselor Golden, from State Rep. Golden, who's been really a leader in this in the area. There is no bill down at the State House requiring counseling for people coming off long-term medication. My hope is that the letter might kick off discussion down there, and maybe a bill would come forward. That's it?
Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Counselor Elliott, request the city manager present update on plans to fill the position of the election office manager. Seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Counselor Elliott?
Can you let us know, Mr. Manager? It's been quite some time that this position has been open. And of course, with the last election, and now we have another election coming up, I'm curious what the delay is.
Well, right now, we're waiting for the, well, again, we go through this on a regular basis. The motions generally are approved before, they're by the body, before they're sent to me.
Well, last week, you were prepared to respond to some, so I guess...
No, no, so...
They're just selected. When you want to answer, you do.
No, every now and then, I like to just remind everyone that it does take an action of the body to send this on to me. But let me just say that right now, we have an election in three weeks. Things are going very well in the elections office. We're getting very positive feedback from the community. And I want to get through this election, and then we will be filling that position.
How long has that position been vacant?
We had a temporary person in place for a number of months. I don't have an exact time on that.
Maybe you could include that in the report, because my recollection is going to be at least...
Been a while.
Four, five, six months.
Yeah, in terms of the permanent position, it hasn't been that long for the, there was a temporary position in place, and then we replaced that with another temporary position.
How come? I'm just curious. What's the purpose behind that?
Really, to evaluate how well we're doing and make improvements. We found a lot of problems with the way the operation, it conducts itself. We have all new election commissioners, almost all new election commissioners that are working at it. And that's basically it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kennedy?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, if I've been following you correctly, there was a temporary person in there for several months.
Correct.
A person from out of the city, out of the area. And he's recently been replaced by a person that was working at City Hall.
Correct.
And that person was called an interim, I think.
Correct.
Director. And that person has other responsibilities as a hearings officer in the Law Department.
That's correct.
Is the idea to have that person do both roles? In other words, to do, and I guess it's all the hearings, right, for everything?
Correct.
Plus elections? Is that the idea, is to streamline or to have that person do both?
That's a possibility, and we're, again, we're evaluating that right now. If you recall, we redid the job description for the election office manager to make it a part-time position. So the thought now is to, given the candidates that we looked at, is to potentially redevelop that job description to include both responsibilities.
In two different departments, right?
The ones in elections and, Law is responsible for elections and the hearing officer.
Right, but they really aren't related, I guess, is what I'm...
Correct.
Right? Okay. How many hearings go on a week? I mean, just how busy is the hearings officer? Is that a, that's a full-time job at this point?
No, actually, it was a part-time job. Other responsibilities were added to that position when we were in the middle of our collective bargaining and doing some of the claims work, claims adjustment work. But we've been reorganizing that out, and we're no longer involved really in the collective bargaining, the research that went into that. So that, the hearings really are only a couple of days a week.
For all the hearings?
Correct.
Full days?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess we're probably anticipating that elections is busy during the election season, and it isn't so busy the rest of the time?
It's very busy during election seasons, and then there's the census, and then there's other follow-up work that goes on throughout the year. As you recall, we had a full-time position there, really, forever. So this, you know, there's work that needs to take place throughout the year in the elections office. But the thought, and again, we haven't finalized this, the thought is to have it be a part-time position with other responsibilities tied in with the hearing officer.
I guess what I would bring to your attention, what is of concern to me, is that it would seem, it seems that last year, when we brought in the temporary person, the guy from, that was from outside the city.
Right.
Part of the reason we did that is that there were a lot of problems in the election commission.
Correct.
And I think we've gone about trying to correct those problems, and there's been a lot of discussion on the city council about that.
Correct.
And there's been several initiatives that have been taking place to change that. So I think we need to be careful about burdening the person that's in charge of that to the point where the election commission office slips back into the way that it was before we even started in the first place.
Agreed, agreed.
So, I'm sorry, with...
So that's why we're, if I may, that's why we're evaluating that very carefully and...
Okay. And so you'll be, there'll be an evaluation or a report that, I didn't hear what you told Counselor Elliott or at least...
Right after the election.
Right after the election?
Correct.
Okay. And that's when a decision would be made on the leadership in the election commission and what's going to happen with the hearings officer as well?
Correct.
Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next motion by Counselor Elliott, request the city manager modify the council email system. Seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you. This is a follow-up from last week, Mr. Manager, and I tell you, the issue continues to trouble me. In fact, I received a lot of emails on these, not through the city website, quite frankly. And interestingly enough, my phone has been ringing, and I get more voicemails. People saying now they don't trust the email system. So I guess clearly sometime during your administration, Mr. Manager, you decided that your office should start receiving these emails. And I feel it's wrong for you, like on other issues, to try to blame this problem in the past administration, as you did last week. If you read the paper, you will see that at least, you know, one former city manager realized that the manager has no business in city councilors' emails. So I don't understand why you went and did that without telling anyone. It's beyond me. It's wrong, and I'm not going to stand by while the public's privacy is being invaded. Now, the key phrase here, the issue, is blind copy. That means you're not letting the public know that the manager's office is receiving them. And clearly, when you go in the system, they want to click on certain city councilors or all of them. So, right, there's a disclaimer, but it doesn't tell the public the manager's getting these emails. This is not transparency in government, Mr. Manager, no matter what anyone says. Clearly, this is not about addressing service requests, because otherwise, they would have been taken care of. As you know, you strip the former mayor's aide of getting these emails. And we know she used these emails to address the service requests. So why you ever took these emails away from her, you know, is another questionable aspect of this whole issue. I want the problem rectified immediately. People don't just send emails for service requests. There's an e-GOV system for that. So I would like to amend my motion to read, request the city manager put an end to the messages to the city councilors automatically, and put an end to the messages going to city councilors that are automatically, that are also automatically going to the manager's office. Sorry for the slip up. So that would be an amendment to my motion.
Counselor Laurie?
If I could just speak on this, I got an email this week. It was addressed personally to myself. And I don't, these emails, and I can understand Counselor Elliott's concern, especially if the public doesn't understand it's going somewhere else. But they are public. It's part of the public record. And I will say, I got an email this week, and by the time I could respond to it, your staff had taken care of it. So it made me look pretty good, as Counselor Rita Mercy was saying last week. So by the time I called, the issue was settled. But I can understand what Counselor Elliott's saying. I think it's, you know, the public should realize that these are public emails. And I think they should also realize they may be going to another department. I'm sure MIS keeps them all. I've never deleted one since I've come on the council. As far as I'm concerned, you can, after seeing that this week, you can keep getting mines. And that's the only problem I have with the amendment. I don't mind mine going to your office. But I think it's important for the public to realize, and there should be something there in large letters that, in some cases, these may be going to the mayor's office, the manager's office, are kept on file. But that's the only problem I have with the amendment. I personally don't care if they go to you, or they go to the mayor or anyone else. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we did discuss this last week. And again, I, you know, and I did speak very abruptly last week, saying, you know, I don't care what you do. And I want to be clear on this. I do care what happens in terms of the timely response to government, to citizen issues that are raised. And, you know, and today's article notwithstanding. You know, this process, I was advised, was in place prior to my becoming on the city manager. Now, having said that, you know, and I don't want to get into a back and forth, and I'm not, there's no blame game going on here, Counselor. I actually think it's a good thing. It's what most, very frankly, what most communities do. Or every community that I'm aware of has a way to get contact, the city or town government, and it goes through the council and manager, or board of selectmen and manager, to rectify problems. I don't even get them, as I think I've explained. It goes to the city manager email address, not my personal email address here in the city. And they're just handled by staff to address issues. And they're just handled by staff to address issues. So, you know, I just want to be, be clear on that, that that's what we're really looking for is effective government. And so, you know, I think Counsel Kennedy's point was probably a good one last week, that we should note on there and maybe there's a way to note on there that, you know, do you want to exclude the manager's office or do you want to include the manager's office? I do think that, you know, many people, which goes to the mayor's point, some people don't necessarily fully understand the, the way problems are solved here. They think they, you know, they, they need to go through a, a city council as opposed to the manager's office or the administration, which actually is responsible for the operation of the city, day-to-day affairs. And so this is, it was just a way, I think, that was put in place, again, at some point in time, I'll leave it at that. And it seems to have worked well, that people's problems are addressed. But I'm more than happy to do what Counsel Kennedy, I think that's a great idea. I'm more than happy to, as I've communicated with counselors, take that copy off. If the council wishes, we can take all copies off. But Counsel Laurie has indicated, Counsel Mercy has indicated, it's a system that seems to work well in responding to people's issues.
Counsel Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I think that is the point, that this does work well. I think, you know, most of the emails I get are copied to all the councilors. A vast majority of them, that's the box that most people check. Do you want to notify an individual counselor or two or three or to the entire council? Almost all of them that I get go to the entire council. Also, a fair number of them that I get, by the time I look at them, have a response. And I think that's what people want. They want their government to respond quickly and efficiently. So I was going to say, much of what's already been said, I did think Counsel Kennedy raised a good point, that people should know, I guess, that it's going to the manager's office, they should have the ability to opt in or opt out of that. But I would also add that when I do get emails, almost always, I would forward them to someone in the manager's office. Can you look into this and tell me what's going on? Unless it was something I had personal direct knowledge of, that's what I would do. So they end up there anyway. Doesn't mean it needs to be a secret, the public can know, but I don't think it should stop, because I think it does point to the effectiveness of one, at least one segment of the population likes to communicate by email with the government. And I think they get a pretty good response and I think that should continue. So I, I really don't know what the amendment to the motion was, but I would support the notion of people knowing that it goes to the manager's office and having the ability to opt in or opt out.
Counsel Kennedy and then Counsel Newn.
Well, I probably don't have to say anything now, but the, but I will just say that, you know, I think the system works well the way it is now. Like, if you send an email, you should know where it's going. And it's, so maybe what the best thing is for the manager to come back next week or whatever with a, with a plan that includes something like that and then just go forward. You don't want to just destroy the whole system, because it does seem to work well. But I'm also a person that doesn't get individual emails. I, I'm, I'm not even sure if I ever got one. I think most of, almost every email that comes to me, comes to everybody else, too.
Counsel Newn and then Counsel Leahy.
I totally agree that the system work. What I also want to see is, while that is, to address the other concern that should the public want just the council to see it, they should have a choice or an option to do that, meaning as Counsel Martin indicated, opt out. But, you know, for me, most people send an email to me because they want something done. And the best way to get it done quick is to have that the administration see it. By the time you get to the meeting, it's all done. The work is done, which is, that's how it's supposed to be. But there's certain cases where, you know, they don't want the manager to see, so they should have opportunity to opt out. So I'm sure that the system has an opt-out, you know, you know, option as well. So if not, then I would request that, you know, I would urge the manager to, you know, check with MIS to, to get that system in place so that, you know, people who want to opt out can do so, meaning opt out from you seeing it. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. You know, there's no argument that it works. The, the point was, though, as a new counselor, I didn't know it was going to your office. So I wanted to make sure, and as Counsel Martin said, most of the time you do, you forward it. But it shouldn't excuse us from doing our job either, you know what I mean? People thought they were sending it to one of us, hoping that one of us would respond, unknowingly that basically we really don't have to do anything, it gets done. So it kind of leaves us of our duty. But that being said, you know, if there were just a, a section where someone knows it's going to your office and if they don't want it to go there, that would be fine. Because I did talk to MIS and the, the problem with the new, well, it's fixed now, but with the new setup, generally, you would just hit reply and you would answer your emails. And now you have to go down to the bottom and find the email address specifically so you can answer your emails. So I'm glad that was addressed. But I would just, I'd be fine as long as people know it's going, where it's going.
Any further discussion? Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I hear, you know, from a number of members that the system is working. I just want to say that, that on more than one occasion, people, when I see them or they respond back, they thank me. They thank me for looking into it, they thank me for responding, because I'm one of the only few individuals or a select number of individuals respond. They don't say that the manager's office respond, they say, thank you for responding, thank you for forwarding it. So I'm not sure what you see, either you care or you don't care, Mr. Manager. Either you read everything or you don't read everything. You see things or you don't see things. How do you even know what's being taken care of if you say that you're not, that you don't even see them? So I think you're being less than dishonest. The system, you should have came to the council and said, look, this is what I'm doing. In order to facilitate the, the requests from city councils, I'm going to start, I'm going to start getting them all. I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure why you didn't do that. I think you're less than honest in doing it. And the only reason I found out, in fact, including all of the other eight city councilors found out, nobody seemed to know about this, was that your assistant, Linda Clark, said, you know, don't, why are you sending these? I could BCC'd on all this stuff. So I guess back to my original point that many emails that I get were not being tended to. So whatever the system is, opt in or opt out, I'm fine with it. I'm, I just think that people should be able to contact their city councilors when they want to. Just like now, they, they contact at home. It's like sending an email that we're getting at home. And similarly to a phone call, there's not much difference. They should know, and if there's a disclaimer, if there's something that says, guess what, the manager's getting this, then they'll know one way or the other. Thank you.
Counsel Mercy.
Well, many years ago, I had a very special person that used to, because he was sick, would sit at a table. And when the phone would ring, he would answer that phone. And a lot of those calls were supposed to come to me, but he took them and he did a human's job. And he died. And I don't have that anymore. And working every day, I realized that for many years, as long as I can remember, that the emails went to the mayor's office. And I know that over years, Diane Burgenowski, she would email it to us, but then she would email it to the proper department and everything was getting done. I don't know that it went to the manager's office. It isn't going to the manager himself to open up a commute, computer and look to see, that's my understanding. It went to the manager's office and, Mr. Manager, don't kid me, because it went to Linda Clark, who did a tremendous job of forwarding it to different departments as Diane has done before, or it goes to Henry and he does it too. So I lost the man that sat there for all those years doing a human's job for me. And instead, it was diverted to two special people, Linda Clark and, I'm going to tell you, and Henry Marshand. And between the two of you, you made me look good and I'm going to say it again, because I will give credit where credit is due. And I do respond to people. So whether you did it and I responded and say, is everything okay? And they said, yes, we were a great team together. So I'm, I'm just giving credit. I see Counsel Elliot and I see Counsel Kennedy's, you know, I see their point, they have a point. Personally, I'm so desperate to get the thing done that I don't care where it goes, I don't care if it goes to Moran and down in the MIS and he does it, just as long as it gets done. That's, that's what I care for, that's what it's all about for me. I mean, that's my opinion, maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I want to see done. I want, I hate the red tape.
Right.
The most frustrating thing to be a city counselor is, you want it done right now, but you got to go through this, that, it's red tape. But, so I welcome this being done rather quickly, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Mendoza.
Yeah, I mean, if, the only issue is if we want it to be transparent and the sender of the messages to know exactly what's going to happen with their message, then let's just put a checkbox along with the rest of us for the manager's office. And if they check that, the officer's going to be copied like the rest of us. If not, they don't. I know for most, the vast majority of the messages I receive, I would wind up forwarding to the manager anyway. I mean, the only ones that wouldn't need to be forwarded were invitations. But everything else would require some department to take care of it. And so I would forward it to the manager to do that. And generally, it was done. Now, yes, I didn't know that there was a blind copy already going on, so it was actually kind of, I thought someone else forwarded before I did. It was already taken care of, which is fine. But understanding are the people that send the emails now, that there could be a slight delay if they don't choose to send it to the manager's office, that I'll have to maybe an hour or two before one of us reads it, forwards it on. It's a minor delay, I'm sure we could, it won't be delayed that much, but things were getting done. So in that sense, it was working. Now, the other thing is that there should never be an expectation of privacy when sending some message to government. Anything that's stored, whether from the website or emails, by law, becomes public and a Freedom of Information Act can request that information. So the city's actually required to record and store those messages in case that happens. So there should be no expectation of privacy. And if they, they really want to remain private, they'll have to make that call by phone or by direct email to whoever they're trying to contact, not through the city's website. I'm, I would ask for clarification on the motion now, because I don't fully understand the amendment. If the, if it is to say that only those individuals or offices selected by the person sending the message are to see it, that's fine, I'm, I'm happy with that. But let's be clear about that. And just put the selections and whoever is selected, that's who gets the messages. If that's the intent of the motion, and I'd like that clarified, then I'm, I'd support it.
Counsel Elliot.
Look, I'm going to withdraw the motion. I think.
The amendment.
Excuse me, the amendment. And just include the opt-in, opt-out function, just let people at home know what's going on, that there's no BCC, if you want to opt in, fine, if you want to opt out, great. This is.
Counsel Kennedy.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think what Counsel Mendoza said is a good idea, except I think we should do it the opposite way. In other words, I, I should think it, it should just be clear that it's going to the manager's office and if people don't want it to go to the manager's office, then they check the box, rather than the other way around. Because people may not realize the, the significance of checking the box. So if we do it that way and then if they don't want it to go to the manager, then that's it. Hey, my objection really is to, is, is that people should know where it's going to. So if it's going to you, I, that's, that's okay with me, it's just that the sender should know it's going to you. But I just think that might be better than the way I thought that you described it.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to belabor this point, where I know that everyone's anxious to get, put this issue all, all behind us. I, to the, I think that the reason it was done the way it was, was so that it would be, probably so it wouldn't be fully transparent, but for, to, to give the council, give to the public the, the, the sense that they could, they were sending something to their elected officials and it was being done and therefore it wasn't, so the credit wasn't going to someone other than the elected officials. I think there was probably, that was the intention, the way it was set up when it was done. The important thing to me is, I just want to, to Counsel Mercy's point, I just want to solve problems. And we have a good staff with Henry and Linda and other people that can get these things done. That's what we should be looking at.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next motion by Counsel Elliot, request the city manager provide an update on the trash contract, seconded by Counsel Mercy, Counsel Elliot.
We had a presentation and we've had, we had discussions about this and we haven't heard anything since, Mr. Manager, on this $25 million contract, as well as the, I guess the, in addition to that, it'll be a change in the recitaling pickup. So is there an update on that?
We actually are scheduling Gunther to come in and give a presentation on the rollout of the implementation of the new contract.
So the.
That should be, that should be happening in the next, do you recall when, I think we're bringing him in and I thought it was October, right, right towards the end of October.
So you already signed the contract?
Yes, I am.
When, when was that done?
That was done back in July, I think.
July?
Right.
So when you brought it in, you just signed it shortly thereafter?
No, 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 it, I brought it in back in May.
Okay.
And we hammered out some details and got it done in July, I believe it was.
Could we get a copy of that contract, please?
Sure.
Great. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Motion to adjourn by Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. We stand adjourned.